Approve the agenda, two approval minutes, one twelve, one fourteen, one twenty, one twenty-eight, and two-two, three warrants, four correspondence, five for liaison skating scooter ramps for Center Street Park, six new business approved, bond deal company engagement letter for the audit year and June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, approved two thousand and twenty-one certificate of highway mileage, no changes, approved Lister certificate, no appeal or suit pending relating to April one, two thousand and twenty, for the Vermont Department of Taxes Administrative Assistant Position, and we need to add the approval of the Stan Dix Authorization of Additional Services and the Nemrick Training Contract, seven will be public comment. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Motion to approve?
Well, I got Bob.
I'll second it.
Second, any discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Okay, approval of minutes, did everybody read their minutes, there was quite a few of them? Do you want to do them one at a time, Linda, or can we do them all together?
Not unless somebody wants to make adjustments, otherwise do them all once and good.
Does anybody have any adjustments?
Make a motion to approve minutes is red.
Back it up.
Okay, any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Warrants. Payroll ending one thirty-one, twenty-one for ten thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and eight cents. Payroll ending two-seven, twenty-one for eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars and nineteen cents. Accounts payable ending two-five, twenty-one, and the amount of eight thousand, five sixty-seven, ninety-two. You have John Ray's son for one thousand, one forty-seven, you have IRS taxes for three thousand, two eighty-nine. Accounts payable ending two-twelve, twenty-one, for thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety cents. We have the Apalachia Salt, which is the road salt, for seven thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. Blue Flame, excuse me, Blue Flame Gas Company, which is propane, for one thousand, eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty cents. Casella Waste Management, for three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty cents. Water Technology Chemicals, for the wastewater treatment, four thousand, six hundred and fourteen dollars and sixty-four cents. John Ray's son Diesel Fuel, for two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars and seventy-two cents. Northeast Municipal LLC Plow Blades, for two thousand, two hundred dollars. Verizon, which is the cell phones, one thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty cents. IRS for two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Can I entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Correspondence, four, we got the transportation board letter, and it's about permitting authorization for airports, a restricted landing service, so everybody has this. We don't need any kind of action on it.
Confirm it.
Just informational only. Five is board liaison skating and scooter ramp for Center Street. Rebecca?
Okay, so I also wanted to quickly, under correspondence, just mention, I sent it all to you, but I sent out an invitation letter to some community leaders to ask them to come to a brainstorming session regarding, just if they might have any ideas for their organization to use the town green as we envision developing it, and the point of doing that is to help start getting some support letters to help us apply for grants and things like that, so that is a correspondence that didn't come to the town, but it...
Hold up for a minute.
Rebecca, we want to make sure that you guys all knew about it, and you all have...
You're soundful. I'll just come in here. I'll just come in here.
You're frozen, honey.
Yeah, I don't, for some reason, the internet in the other room is not great, so, what I was just saying is that I wrote this, this community letter to invite some community leaders to a brainstorming session at the end of February to discuss ideas for, if they might have any ideas, ways that their organization could use the town green insofar as how we're developing it, it's just a brainstorming session with community leaders right now, and then I'm going to create a report for all of you and present that, and then have, hopefully, this will be after the election, but we'll have a public gathering where we can talk about these ideas and bringing all the kind of, you know, resident community suggestions, questions, complaints, whatever. Okay, so then regarding the skating scooter ramps, unfortunately, I was going to use my other computer in the other room to share it on the screen, and, but you all have copies of it, and I can also put it up on the website as part of my, you know, on the board liaison report, and what I have come to ask for tonight, I gave you a detailed budget down to the nuts and bolts of building some skate and scooter ramps on Center Street Park, and it's because we had identified a recreational line in the budget that is forty-two hundred dollars in it, that it needs to be spent, and this is a really great way to spend it, we've already brought a lot of action down to that park with the ice skating rink, and we have some very enthused people willing to get together and build these ramps. The way we are building them, number one is sheet metal is being donated by B and B Auto in Bennington, and they're willing to donate more as well, that's kind of the biggest, most expensive piece that goes on the bottom, it preserves it. We're building them in such a way that if they were, when, they will require maintenance at some point, but it'll be the kind of maintenance that it's by a new sheet of plywood and replace it, things like that, and the commitment that we have is to fundraise to do any maintenance on it, this is the kind of thing that we just saw with the ice skating rink, gets a ton of community support, and, so, you know, if, for some reason, these things that we build get no action, they just sit there, I really don't think that's going to be the case, but if it does, this is something that can be decommissioned and moved, we're not installing anything permanent, we're not creating, you know, ten years of problems for panel, I just wanted to be really clear about that, and I'll...
Did you, what were you going to share, do you want me to share it? I've got that email up, if it's just for pictures.
Let me go to the other computer and see if I can pull it up, okay?
Oh, okay. I didn't mean to sidetrack you, I thought maybe I could just share it.
Well, I haven't ready to go in here, and if I got another bar back, I can share it.
We can hear you now.
All right, well, here we go, all right, so, this is the budget, and, this will be built by volunteers, I already have a whole slate of them, and this is by people that have built these before, they know what they're doing, okay, so, I mean, if you don't know anything about skateboard ramps, we're talking about building a quarter pipe and a bank-style ramp box with coping, and then little roller ramps, which are just little, little guys, we're going to, you know, you can use scrap, whatever's left to build these little things for the smaller ones, and, so that's it, this is how much it all costs, we priced it all out, so you know that we had a budget for it and what we were thinking, and it is fifteen dollars more than the forty-two hundred in that line, I will, I will personally put that in, because my son will use these skateboard ramps for sure, so that's it, I'm asking for action tonight, if you would allow us to utilize those funds for building these.
Rebecca, I got one question.
Yeah.
Now, is, are these going to be in place of the ice skating rink on the same area of the...
It will be around there, I think it may take up some of the space where the little baby rink is, but, but these, there's enough room on that space for all of those things to exist.
That's what I'm saying.
And both the ramps, the ramps are movable.
Like, yeah, but you're using the area around the, going to use the tennis court area, the ramps is what I'm asking.
Yes.
Because if we're going to use other external surfaces, then we may have to take and go back to Act two-fifty.
Just the tennis court, just the tennis court.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, these are movable temporary ramps, they'll be big and heavy, they'll be hard to move, but they won't, they're not going to be bolted into the ground, and they will be on the tennis court, we're trying to make the most out of what we jokingly call the only flat place in panel, which we actually found out isn't flat when we poured water into it, but, but, so that's, you know, this is all just about trying, what we're really trying to do is create these kind of very low budget but high value little projects that bring traffic down to that park, so, this was another step in that direction.
Thank you.
So then can I motion to use the forty-two hundred line?
I'll make a motion.
Money that was in the recreation fund to build these ramps, have these ramps built.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike, any further discussion?
I do have, I do have one question under discussion.
Yeah.
Rebecca, do, maybe you've already done this, maybe, maybe it's a moot point, because of, of the skating ramps in the, in the skating rink, in the, in the skateboard ramps, do we have to add that to our town insurance, which I mean, I'm sure we already have for every, okay?
No, so I had our insurance representative come down to the site, and I stood there and pointed in every direction and said, we want to do this, we want to do this, what if we do this, you know, and there, it is, we are already insured, it's a park, that is its assumed use, so...
Okay.
As long as you're not building a skate ramp with rusty nails, yeah, no, I covered all the spaces, don't worry, thank you for asking, so I could say it publicly, yeah.
Right, exactly, that's, that was my exact point.
Thank you.
Okay, so, no other discussion?
And we have signage, the signage is coming.
Okay.
Signage is coming as soon as you can drill a hole in the ground.
Okay, excellent, so Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Thank you, Rebecca. Was she done?
Okay, thanks, guys, I appreciate it, I'll come...
New business, approved by DiO and Company Engagement Letter for Audit Year and June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Well, we just have to have a motion to sign this, correct?
I think that one requires your signature, right? Just a chair?
Well, we need a motion, so can I entertain a motion, please, to sign the...
Make a motion to approve the bond deal or company letter in audit year and for June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty.
Do I have a second?
Second it.
Any discussion?
That's for the fiscal year of nineteen twenty, correct?
Yes, June twenty.
Yep, 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 but it's fiscal year nineteen twenty.
Yes, correct.
You're off by a hundred years.
Yeah, there you go, Bob, sorry, for the fiscal year two thousand and nineteen and two thousand and twenty, just want to be clear.
Correct.
For people watching, that's all, just want to be clear for people watching.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Okay, I'm signing my little life away here.
You have to pay for it, it says right there on page two. Fine print.
I'll take it out of my phone, okay? All right, approved two thousand and twenty-one certificate of highway mileage, there's no change, the mileage total is seventy-six point oh-five-six miles in the whole town. Can I entertain a motion?
Don't move.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Am I the only one that has to sign this?
No, I have two more people here, we'll let them do it, that gives us three.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Approved Lister certificate, no appeal or suit pending relating to the April first, two thousand and twenty, for Vermont Department of Taxes, so this is it, no appeal or suit pending, we hereby certify that on the day, there are no any, there are not any appeals pending from action of the Lister, nor suits pending to recover taxes paid under protest relating to the April first, two thousand and twenty grand list of panel Vermont, given under our hands at panel in the county of Bennington, state of Vermont, this fourth day of February twenty twenty-one, and the listers all signed it, Jody, Wendy, and David. So can I have a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second it then.
Okay, any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Forgot Jamie, Jamie?
Hi.
Angie, I. And we all need, the three of us that are here need to sign it. Okay, thank you. All right, we're moving on to Administrator Assistant Position. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I forgot that we had our added, we need to approve the Sante Authorization of Additional Services. Stan, Stan Tex?
Yeah.
Stan Tex, this is for the, additional services for the landfill, for the...
For the transfer.
Transfer station?
Yeah.
Landfill transfer station, isn't that the same thing, kind of? And that's for texture testing, correct?
Yeah.
The following additional service, conduct the spring or fall two thousand and twenty-one water quality sampling and reporting as outlined in the certification, our services do not include the laboratory analyst cost. So do we have any idea what the extra cost is going to be?
That particular one is ninety-three hundred dollars, which is in our budget.
This is ninety-three hundred dollars, and it's in our budget. Does everybody understand that?
But it didn't say ninety-three hundred, and it does not include lab fees, I think, and some additional items.
Right, that's what I, yeah.
Right, right, and I guess we don't have any indication of what those are.
Not at this time, right?
No.
No. So can I entertain a motion for the additional services?
Motion, sign it.
Second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Okay. The Nemrick Training Contract. This contract is based on the assumption that all the modules and procedures are being used properly and to the capacity, however, in order to assess potential need for training and getting systems set up to ensure that these tasks can be done efficiently, I suggest that the first three months of this contract should allow for up to ten hours per month to give ample time for assessing present financial systems and potential training of town staff. If you agree with this, we can add the above language to the contract, and we already discussed this, correct?
Yes, we already discussed it, so this is the second portion of what they're offering, which is the monthly reconciliations, monthly approval of general entries, and a spot check of the books, random, random spot checks of the books, and also a, a monthly report given to the select board of where we are at with the financials, so it basically covers all the other holes, the other missed, the gaps.
Of what the internal auditor...
Did you want me to read this, or you just basically covered it?
I just, I mean, if you'd like to read it, yes, but I believe I covered it.
Okay. And then, the monthly cost estimate is five hours at a hundred and forty-three dollars, which is seven twenty-five per month, and that would be for three months, correct? For the first addition.
It would be higher for three months, so they can assess what is needed and make sure that all the systems are set up so they can do this work.
Yeah.
And then after that, it would go down to the five hours a month.
Okay. So can I entertain a motion, please?
We'll make a motion, we sign the contract.
A second?
Second it.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. That's covers everything, now we can move to the Administrator Assistant Position.
Administrator.
Administrative Assistant Position. Who would like to start first?
I'll, I'll start, um, we had, just so people know, we had, you guys already know this, we had our, we had two interview sessions, we had three candidates for the position, we had two interview sessions with all three, because we felt that all three candidates were worthy of a second interview. And all three candidates had some really strong points, some of them in different areas, but all three were really super strong candidates, which is really encouraging, but also difficult, I think, for us to, for, you know, I mean, for us to come to a decision tonight, so, I know it was for me, another thing that I'd like to point out is that Sid Smithers sat in the interview sessions with us from the DRB Planning Commission, so, which this person is going to be working for that, so it wasn't just a select board, you know, our, the other two, the other, a representative from the other two boards who are going to be utilizing this person, sat with us as well in the interview session and participated and had some really good input, for sure. Um, you know, you guys can elaborate from there, that's a start, I guess.
I appreciate what you said, Mike, and I, I agree, I mean, I can tell you that these three candidates all were very strong, and we were very lucky to have three strong candidates to choose from, my number one choice was at different points in time, yeah, all three of these candidates, so, it took some noodling on this, it took some thinking about this to, 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 to come up with a, we'd come up with what I, what I believe is the right choice, but I don't think we can make a bad choice here, I think we had three really strong candidates. Mike, did you, are we listing our preference at this point?
Oh, I don't know, I, I, we can, that, we can do that if you want to, that's for sure, I, I think, I think, to elaborate on that, Bob, I think it says something to, for where our town is headed, in the direction that we're headed right now, because, because we had three really strong candidates for this position, whereas if we weren't headed in the right direction, I'm not sure we would have had that, you know, I, I think we're headed in a positive direction, I guess, is what I'm really trying to get at, and, and, I mean, if we were, unless, you know, when, I guess, let's give everybody, the other board members a chance to discuss it, and then we can do that, we can go to our, our number one preference, that, that'd probably be the way to do it, I guess.
All right, so I won't voice mine yet, I'll wait till everybody else weighs in.
I think that's fair, everybody gets a chance to speak their piece.
Jamie, you want to go?
Well, I agree that, all three candidates were very good and well-spoken, and, two was surprised that we had some, such a large interest in the job posting, I just want to thank everybody that did apply.
Ronnie, you have anything?
All I want to say, I want to thank the people who came forward and applied for that job, and that's, I guess we all got our own opinion as far as who was better candidate wise, so, I'm ready to go on that.
I agree, I think they were all, I agree, I think all three were excellent, if I could, I'd hire all three and put them on positions, but we can't do that, because I think there would be an access to all of us at some point and somehow. I'm still torn between two of them, but it's so hard, I did pros and cons on both of them, and they're just both so good. Linda, did you want to add anything, since you were going to be working with anybody?
I'm just going to add that, yes, all three were very strong candidates.
Just want to add that all three were very strong candidates, I'm in agreement with that, I do have a preference, but I realize it is board's pleasure, their decision, I just want to state, though, that I would be able to work with any or all three of them.
Rebecca, did you want to add anything?
Sure, if you can, if you can hear me, I mean, I did express a preference to you last night, and, and I did express why, so, you do know, you do know who that is, I think, and also, as I expressed, is that, you know, there's a, there's a couple ways to look at it, you know, and, and when you're really assessing what panel needs are right now and where we're headed in the future, that's all that I would ask the board to consider in this decision.
Thank you. So now, do we want to make a recommendation, does anybody want to make a recommendation or a motion?
Do you want to, you want to go to our number one preference for each of us, or, or do you want me to make the recommendation, my recommendation? Or make a motion, how do you want to do it?
I think we're all...
I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion for my number one preference, I'm, I'm fine with that right now.
Okay, Bob, did you have something to say?
Well, I, I'm, I'm fine with that, too, I, I thought we would go around and just everybody state their preference, and then, and then I think the, the selection becomes clear, or we can go, and then, and then make a motion, but then, everybody gets a say.
Okay, that's fine, so, we'll let Mike go first.
My number one recommendation, my number one candidate was Tim Darter.
Okay. Bob?
My number one was also Tim.
Jamie?
After a long thought, mine was Tim Darter also.
Ronnie?
Mine was Megan Albert.
I'm torn between the both of them, I really am torn between the both of them, I think they would both do an excellent job, they're both very well qualified, so I guess, either one of them, and I would be fine with that.
I, I think it's also fair to say that Sid's recommendation was Tim as well last night, because he could, because Sid was unable to attend tonight, otherwise he would be making that statement.
Right, he did vocalize that.
And we know Rebecca's. Okay, so then, can I entertain a motion?
We make a motion that we extend an invitation for employment to Tim Darter for the Administrative Assistant Position.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Jamie?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. So, we will contact him tomorrow, and let him know that we are very well interested in him, and he can have the job if he so wishes, and we would like him to start immediately, correct? And we would like him to start immediately, correct?
I think we should have him start Monday.
Okay.
If, if possible.
Mondays are holiday, President's Day.
Oh my God, you guys in your holidays, you guys all work for the government, nobody's ever worked for themselves. Ronnie, do you have Monday off?
I would, I would have had it off, President's Day, we always got that off.
Yeah, I know, but now when you work for yourself and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I don't get paid, I got it off, I don't get.
Yeah, there, there you go. Tuesday.
Didn't he answer the question, he was willing to work holidays?
Yeah. Let's, let's have him start Tuesday, then, how's that?
All right, thank you, everybody.
Can I make a recommendation, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Um, if, as far as process of getting him started, I think it would be really beneficial for myself and Linda, and perhaps the Chair and Vice Chair of the Boards, we're not creating forum, to invite him to come on Tuesday and sit down and set out our tasks and just start on the right foot with good communication, and you know what I mean? Instead of just like, hey, here you go, take some minutes, right? So I don't know if we want to just talk, we don't need to talk about it now, we don't need to, but that's a suggestion I just want to put on the record.
Well, I think, I think that's a great suggestion, and I think that's, that's probably what we should do. And I can be available anytime Tuesday.
I can be anytime after eleven on Tuesday.
So I'm in, I'm in school on Tuesday until four. What's that?
Then why did you suggest it?
Well, because I could do morning, I could do the morning, and I can do after, I could do four o'clock.
Well, I don't have to be here. I mean, if Mike can be here, that's fine, one of the.
So, so we can do it this way, if you want to, Angie. You create, you create a document of what your vision is for, for, of what we're looking for, for Tim, and we can express that to him on Tuesday if you want to.
Okay. That sounds good.
Okay.
Okay, and, um, are, have we done it, our I's and crossed our T's? I mean, uh, do we want to say start as soon as possible? And Tuesday, if it's possible? I mean, what do we have to do in order to get somebody to start?
I think we ought to leave it up to him, because who knows, maybe he's got something going Tuesday.
Well, that's true, that's true. Possible.
How quick can you start?
We have paperwork.
Linda says there's paperwork and stuff that you have to do.
Right. Right, that's what I was concerned with.
Right. So as soon as we can get together, after all the paperwork is together, we will sit down with him and give our vision and what we expect from him and his job description, and so.
What's, what's your schedule like Wednesday, Angie?
Anytime after eleven.
How about you, Rebecca, on Wednesday?
We have a webinar for the town, for virtual town meetings. Uh, what's the time on that again, Linda?
Eleven.
So, but when does it end, do you know?
Couple hours, Wednesday afternoon.
So we could do late afternoon, like three thirty-four, again, and remember, I think he said he was more flexible later in the day, if I remember that correctly, so.
Yep. We can shoot for Wednesday afternoon.
And maybe he can come in, maybe he can come in Tuesday, um, just to get his paperwork stuff done and get, get that out of the way, so that Wednesday we can sit down and, and just talk a hundred percent job and, and what we expect.
Okay. Linda says she'd prefer him to come in on Tuesday and do paperwork, so we will see.
Right.
Okay. Any further discussion on that? And we need to open up for public comment. Rebecca, is there anybody out there?
Um, there's, there's a few.
Are we going to have a meeting next week? Do we have a meeting next Thursday?
No.
Not yet.
We do need, we do need to schedule something for the taxation method.
Well, that's what I was thinking, Bob, maybe we should schedule next Thursday just for that, for the taxation on that town office project. We didn't have it on the agenda tonight, so.
Uh, yeah, I noticed, uh, um, let's, uh, uh, or do we want to do sooner? Uh, we could do, uh, I mean, I'm fine with Thursday, but I want to give the town a little time to think about it.
I, I, we can do anytime, I, I can do anytime next week, school's on vacation, so it's easy for me.
I can't do Tuesday, okay, on Tuesday. So any other day is fine.
And I'm good on the evenings, but, uh.
When, when does, um, absentee ballots haven't gone out yet, or have they?
Why don't we just do it on Thursday?
We just do it on Thursday, that way it's a regular day.
All right.
Yeah.
But it's a special, but it's a regular day. Do the regular time is seven o'clock, okay?
And let's, let's try to keep it, um, let's try to keep it to that, uh, subject if we can. Unless something pops up, Linda, you know, I mean, I don't foresee anything, but maybe.
Is that okay, Linda? Can we do next Thursday at seven o'clock for the tax discussion special? And that's it on that agenda, unless something pops up. Rebecca, is there anybody in the waiting room?
Um, there's no one in the waiting room, and there's no one with their hands up, so if anyone's here and wants to make a comment, you can raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm not seeing anyone. Yep, there's no one with their hand up.
Then that's it, guys, can I entertain?
I have, I have one quick public comment. It'll, it's, come on, now, it's not that bad. It's, uh, something I've been giving a little bit of thought. So it's just, it's some points about the supervision of appointed versus elected officials. So, and this is food for thought for us, to be honest with you. Officials instead of electing actually adds a layer of supervision that doesn't exist right now. Officials will now be under the supervision of the select board. We already have other appointed officials that don't have a boss, quote unquote. They still fulfill their statutory duty with a structure that places them under the supervision of the board. The select board does not manage their day-to-day activities. Officials such as those serving on the Planning Commission, DRB, the zoning administrator. Also, we have hired employees who report directly to the board, the executive assistant, board liaison, and now the administrative assistant. My idea that I would like to present and ask for discussion at a later date is this. I suggest we create more of a team effort model of management than a top-down style. This is what we have started this year as a board, and I believe it has really helped our town function better and more smoothly. I think it is really important right now, with all of the good forward movement we have made in the past months, that we build on what we already have, instead of attempting to do away with what we have created and starting all over again. I think that puts us at risk for losing the good progress we have made. Why should we fix something that isn't broken? Obviously, there is always room for improvements and doing things more efficiently, but we don't need to completely restructure to do that. After the election, if there are appointed officials instead of elected, I suggest we nominate one select board member to be the point person for hired employees and officials. Here is what I think that should look like. This per, this point person does have, does not have, does not have any disciplinary powers alone. Only the select board as a body would have that power. This person should be someone available during the day, able to give a couple hours every week to checking in with employees. This person cannot set the agendas or tasks of the employees. Only the board as a whole can do this. We need to trust our employees to manage their own work and schedules to accomplish what needs to be done. This person would be responsible for checking in with employees, understanding what they are working on, making sure employees give regular reports for the entire board, which we, we touched on that a while ago, and we haven't followed through with it. If an employee has an issue or grievance, this point person can be in charge of getting the issue to the rest of the board for discussion and solutions. This person can hold regular staff meetings, monthly, question mark, bi-weekly, every quarterly, um, to get group updates and help employees coordinate together better. I do believe that monthly minimum staff meetings would be really beneficial. Even if we do not end up with appointed officials after this election, this might be a good thing for the board to consider ongoing. The select board can create some policies and structures that will help more supervision and better functions. For instance, our executive assistant is in charge of managing employee benefits and personnel files. This could be more defined. That's pretty much it, just a little food for thought. You know, I know that question's come up, it's just been batting it around a little bit, and I, I just think that's something we should consider.
I agree.
I agree, Mike, uh, it was nicely put. We, we had made the, uh, point before, and I think it was worth making again, and, and you made it, but I'm going to repeat it, just so everybody hears it. Making, uh, these, these positions, should they become appointed, adds a layer already. Um, so it, it's not that you're missing supervision, it's that it now gives some supervision where there wasn't any before. And, and that supervision is from the board. So, so that is a, uh, that's what would happen with these positions, should they become appointed, and I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm simply stating, uh, simply repeating what you, you stated, Mike, and, and reinforcing it. This actually adds a layer, and that's, uh, adds some supervision where there wasn't any.
Very well said. Anybody else have anything else to add? Then can I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second? Uh, Mike?
Hi.
Bob?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Ronnie?
Hi.
Angie, I. Thank you, everybody, everybody have a good night.
Have a good night, guys.
Thanks a lot.